Well, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District 6. Today is the 28th day of August 2023. This meeting will now come to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome if you're joining us in person or whether you're joining us online. We're glad that you're here and we are so glad to have our students back. This is our second board meeting of the school year and our students have been back for about two weeks now. And if you need to see some encouraging pictures, I would encourage you to go to our website and to our Facebook page just to see especially our newest students and our youngest students. They're pretty exciting to see and they're pretty excited to be there and we're excited that they're here. Just a few comments tonight from me. And the first is this, just that over the last few, last two years, we sometimes have public speakers who have either misled the public or have unintentionally misled the public where people have been confused. And so that happened a couple of weeks ago. We had someone come and at least confuse people into thinking that the Bible had been banned in District 6. And I just want to reassure everyone that the Bible has not been banned in District 6. We have not only the Bible, but plenty of sacred texts. We have any number of versions of the Bible in our school libraries. Strong's Concordance, if you know what that is, in our school libraries. We have also the Quran in our libraries and the Book of Mormon in our libraries. And so no matter of fact, we have not banned any books. That speaker was referring to a specific curriculum that a school board that some years ago, and I think probably the only person who might have been on the board was Ms. Pappas at the time, declined to include in our curriculum. So I just wanted to clarify that for everyone. It's a great chance too, though, to mention that we have some incredible community partners in this school district. And a number of those community partners are churches. And oftentimes we have churches. I see the principal of Dos Rios nodding his head. And I know the Cornerstone Community Church is a great partner for Dos Rios. We have Christ Community has been a fantastic partner for Maplewood. We have Bethel Baptist, they support Franklin, not Franklin, I'm sorry, Jackson in any number of ways. And these are just the ones I know off the top of my head. But one, we're very thankful for all the community partners we have. We have a lot of corporate partners as well. But we're especially thankful for those church partners that we have that come and support our students. Oftentimes they will do things like tutor and mentor students through a program called Kids Hope. Other times they, I know, will just go and sharpen pencils. So they do some very menial administrative tasks that we don't have people to do. And so we do greatly appreciate our church partners. And that's about all I have tonight, other than I did want to say happy birthday to Casey Pearson. That's tomorrow and Casey turns 50 tomorrow, just so everybody knows. And you can tell Casey if you work with him, happy birthday tomorrow. But that's all I've got tonight. To move forward, we need to approve an agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next up are our board member comments and reports. And tonight we'll start with you, Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, it feels slow because we don't have the whole summer to review. But I only made it out to a couple of things. 8:15 we went to a really exciting one, the ribbon cutting of Jefferson in the CTE Center. You know, kind of near and dear to my heart with the trades and everything is that's the industry I'm in. But also the Jefferson kids kind of hold a special place in my heart. That's my liaison school and I used to have a business across the street from them. So I got to see firsthand, you know, the kids going in and out there daily. And to see them get a school of their own and to hear them talk about how proud and how much that meant to them, that was pretty special. So I think that's a huge asset for our community just to have a place that's kind of specialized and dedicated to the trades. You know, honestly, I never thought that esthetician class as a trade, you know, but when you think about it, it makes perfect sense. And just all that entails and the full, all the thought and everything that went into it. And then on top of that, to be able to support a building or even do a building like that just out of extra money from the bond issuance is pretty remarkable. So to just sit back and think of everything that that bond, that one bond has afforded us community, it's really amazing and it just shows, you know, the community's belief in what's going on. So I want to thank everybody for that for sure and hopefully you guys get to go see that and enjoy it. And then 8:22 we got to go to visit Scott Elementary, which is one of my favorite spots. If you ever need to pick me up, you need to visit Scott and see all the smiling faces there. There's a lot of beautiful kids and they got some new stuff with the bond dollars, right? And we got to see the new carpet and paint and some of the upgrades that they were afforded too. So it's touched every school and it's just exciting to kind of see it wrap up and kind of finally see everything that's been done with it. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, good evening. I have to agree, Jefferson High School, the ribbon cutting ceremony, that was pretty spectacular. I think the two things that most interest me or caught my eye was I visited with the gentleman, the instructor for the cybersecurity. And that's a big thing in our house is computer and technology is just not made, but my kids of all, a lot of them have pursued that avenue. And just learning how AI is going to be effective, the cybersecurity, I think is going to be a huge support system. Because AI is going to take on a lot of distractions with a lot of our kids and whatnot. But it was really interesting to hear what he had to say. And the technology that they brought in there is, I mean, top notch. And he kind of walked me through quite a bit of the stuff. And the other thing that I really appreciated was seeing was all the cribs in the childcare room. Because that was nice to see that we are supporting the single moms or single dads out there that are still trying to obtain that education and have a safe place for their students to be. So I think those are the two high points that I really appreciated there. Let's see, football game, I was at for a university and sadly they didn't win, but there's a good show. I was hoping that they were going to pull through better. So better luck on the next game here, right Kyle?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Director Campos Spitsi?
Sure. So yes, the Jefferson High and High School and the Career Tech Ed ribbon cutting was awesome. I really appreciated the principal's comments at the ceremony. That the district and the bond dollars going to invest in that high school in particular, a high school with, you know, students who haven't had the easiest time through their educational journey, was a testament to the equity that our district really does believe in. So I was real proud at that ceremony. As you know, the Career and Tech Ed Center has five pathways, lots of real popular ones. You know, parents approach me thinking I can get them into programs that are already full. And they're like, can you please get my daughter into cosmetology? And I'm like, that's just not how it works. But it really, they are in high demand, you know? It would be amazing to expand those opportunities one day, but this is a really great start. One of the programs, one of the five career pathways...
Well, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District 6. Today is the 28th day of August 2023. This meeting will now come to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Present.
Director Mash. Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood. Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome if you're joining us in person or whether you're joining us online. We're glad that you're here and we are so glad to have our students back. This is our second board meeting of the school year and our students have been back for about two weeks now. And if you, if you need to see some encouraging pictures, I would encourage you to go to our website and to our Facebook page just to see especially our newest students and our youngest students, they're pretty, they're pretty exciting to see and they're pretty excited to be there and we're excited that, that they're here. Just a few comments tonight from me and the first is, is this, just that over the last few, last two years, we sometimes have public speakers who, who have either misled the public or have unintentionally misled the public where people have, have been confused. And so that happened a couple of weeks ago. We had someone come and at least confuse people into thinking that the Bible had been banned in District 6. And I just want to reassure everyone that the Bible has not been banned in District 6. We have not only the Bible, but, but plenty of sacred texts. We have any number of versions of the Bible in, in our school libraries. Strong's Concordance, if you know what that is, in our, in our school libraries. We have also the Quran in our libraries and the Book of Mormon in our, our libraries. And so no matter of fact, we have not banned any books. That speaker was referring to a specific curriculum that a school board that some years ago, and I think probably the only person who might've been on the board was Ms. Pappas at the time, declined to, to include in, in our curriculum. So I just wanted to, to clarify that for every, for everyone. It does, it's a great chance too, though, to, to mention that we, we have some incredible community partners in, in this school district. And a number of those community partners are churches. And oftentimes we, we have churches, I, I see the principal of Dos Rios nodding his head. And I know the Cornerstone Community Church is a great partner for, for Dos Rios. We have, Christ Community has been a fantastic partner for Maplewood. We have Bethel Baptist is, they've support Franklin, not Franklin, I'm sorry, Jackson in any number of ways. And these are just the ones I, I know off the top of my heads, but, but one, we're very thankful for all the community partners we have. We have a lot of corporate partners as well and, but we're especially thankful for those church partners that we have that come and support our students. Oftentimes they will do things like, like tutor and mentor students through a program called Kids Hope. Other times they, I, I know, will just go and sharpen pencils. So they do some very menial administrative tasks that we don't have people to do. And so we, we do greatly appreciate our church partners. And that's, that's about all I have tonight, other than I did want to say happy birthday to Casey Pearson, that's tomorrow, and Casey turns 50 tomorrow, just so everybody knows and you can, can tell Casey, if you work with them, happy birthday tomorrow. But that's all I've got tonight. To move forward, we need to approve an agenda.
I'll move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next up are our board member comments and reports. And tonight we'll start with you, Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, it feels, feels slow because we don't have the whole summer to review, but I only made it out to a couple of things. 8:15 we went to a really exciting one, the ribbon cutting of Jefferson in the CTE Center. You know, kind of near and dear to my heart with the, with the trades and everything is, is that's the industry I'm in, but the, also the Jefferson kids kind of hold a special place in, in my heart. That's the, my liaison school and I used to have a business across the street from them. So I got to see firsthand, you know, the, the kids going in and out there daily and to see them get a, a school of their own and, and to hear them talk about how proud and how much that meant to them, that was pretty special. So I think that's a, you know, a huge, huge asset for our community, just to have a place that's kind of specialized and dedicated to, to the trades. You know, I, I never, honestly, I never thought that a esthetician class as a trade, you know, but when you think about it, it makes perfect sense and just, just all that that entails and the full, all the thought and everything that went into it. And then, and then on top of that, to, to be able to, to support a building or even do a building like that just out of, out of extra money from the, from the bond issuance is, is pretty remarkable. So to just sit back and think of everything that that, that bond, that one bond has afforded us community, it's, it's really amazing and it just shows, you know, the community's belief in what's going on. So I want to thank everybody for that for sure and hopefully you guys get to go see that and enjoy it. And then 8:22, we got to go to visit Scott Elementary, which is one of my favorite spots that just, just if you ever need to pick me up, you need to visit Scott and see all the smiling faces there. There's a lot of beautiful kids and they, they got some new stuff with, with the bond dollars, right? And we got to see the new carpet and paint and some of the, some of the upgrades that they were afforded too. So it's, it's touched every, every school and, and it's just exciting to kind of see it wrap up and kind of finally see everything that was been done with it. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Sullivan.
Yeah, good evening. I have to agree, Jefferson High School, the ribbon cutting ceremony, that was pretty spectacular. I think the two things that most interest me or caught my eye was I visited with the gentleman, the instructor for the cybersecurity. And that's a big thing in our house is computer and technology is just not me, but my kids of all, a lot of them have pursued that avenue and just learning how, how AI is going to be effective. The cybersecurity, I think is going to be a huge support system because AI is going to take on a lot of distractions with a lot of our kids and whatnot. But it was, it was really interesting to hear what he had to say and the technology that they brought in there is, I mean, top notch. And he kind of walked me through quite a bit of the stuff. And the other thing that I really appreciated with seeing was all of the cribs in the childcare room because that, that was nice to see that we are supporting the single moms or single dads out there that are still trying to obtain that education and have a safe place for their students to be. So I think those are the two high points that I really appreciated there. Let's see, football game I was at for a university and sadly they didn't win, but there's a good show. I was hoping that they were going to pull through better, so better luck on the next game here, right Kyle?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Sure. So yes, the Jefferson High and High School and the Career Tech Ed ribbon cutting was, was awesome. I really appreciated the principal's comments at the ceremony, that, that the district and the bond dollar is going to invest in that high school in particular, a high school with, you know, students who haven't had the easiest time through their educational journey was a testament to the equity that our district really does believe in. So I was real proud at that ceremony. As you know, the Career and Tech Ed Center has five pathways, lots of real popular ones. You know, parents approach me thinking I can get them into programs that are already full and they're like, can you please get my daughter into cosmetology? And I'm like, that's just not how it works. But it really, they are in high demand, you know? It would be amazing to expand those opportunities one day, but this is a really great start. One of the programs, one of the five career pathways that is near and dear to my heart is the Teacher Cadet Pathway that focuses on early childhood education. If any of you are readers of the Greeley Tribune, Anne wrote an article about the teacher shortage this last week and how the problem is, has a lot to do with not a lot of teachers graduating. And so the fact that District 6 is, has this Teacher Cadet Program to try to attract teachers starting in high school and giving them those tools and that inspiration and planting that seed early so that hopefully they can turn around, you know, go to a four-year university and then come back to us and teach in our classrooms. I just, I think that's a very worthy investment. But yes, we're kind of talking about bond dollars. Scott, Wilma Scott Elementary, we got to go to my first time going to that school. Like Kyle mentioned, so many beautiful smiling faces, but also really noisy hallways. The acoustics in that building, it was, it's one of those last kind of round buildings were just not well thought out and they still have a portable from the 1960s that has some of their fifth grade classes. So our bond issues went a long way, but in order for a school like Scott Elementary to get a facelift, if not completely torn down and rebuilt, we'll need to pass another bond issue in the future. So hopefully at this point, our taxpayers have seen how transparent we are with the way we spend our money, that we spend it responsibly, that it goes to worthy, worthy buildings and that we will be trusted once again in the future to, to give Scott Elementary a new school as well. And I want to end on the 2023 state assessment results. So as a board, we just got our state assessment results a couple of weeks ago to review how our, our students have been doing in the English Language Arts and Math and Science. And while we are not at the state average, there were a lot of bright spots that I wanted to highlight tonight. So three of our schools outperformed the state in both English Language Arts and Math and those schools were McCalliff, Frontier and Westridge. And then two that didn't outperform the state, but doubled or significantly increased the number of students who met and exceeded expectations. One was Franklin Middle School. So what's fascinating to me about Franklin, 30% of their students are English language learners and 89% of their students categorize as qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So they were, they have been in the highest place in the last six years as far as their performance level with their scores. Martinez was right up there with them, Billy Martinez, who actually has 62% English Language Learners in their school, 62%. And 93% of their students qualify for free and reduced lunch. And they were in the top two tiers of performance level as far as the state assessments go and significantly improved those performance levels. So I just wanted to give a shout out to McCalliff, Frontier, Westridge, but also Billy Martinez and Franklin as well because they're making us proud.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Ms. Pappas.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that haven't been mentioned yet. One, we got to go to the Boys and Girls Club groundbreaking at the Old War No Go Skating Rink, which is for those of you that are my age or older or younger, we all have memories and just really, really happy that, that the Boys and Girls Club have committed to offering a center for our teens and just the partnership with Jefferson High School as well. I think our high school kids will be able to use some of that space for PE classes. So really grateful to the Boys and Girls Club for all of that and all the community members that have contributed and donated to that space as well. And then today we got to visit the Family Center and the new Student Enrollment Center across the street at the bank. I can't remember the name of that bank before, but anyway, they are now in one space. It's a beautiful space. And what's really great about this opportunity is that our families, when they come to register for school, immediately if they need additional resources, they will be able to have people right there from the Family Center that will be able to hook them up to whatever resources they may need. So I appreciate the walkthrough today, looking forward to see, seeing what it looks like when they are done with it, but appreciate that and appreciate everything that's happening in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. And I too got to go on a lot of those, to a lot of those schools and those events. But also got to go to, to a number of events, like, like Ms. Sullivan mentioned, that were not board activities, but got to see Greeley West play on Thursday night and got to see Greeley Central play on Friday night. And also a number of, of school meetings. And one of those, I just, something that, that I love that we do as, as a district and we do, I don't know if we do this at Northridge, but we, I know we do this at Greeley West and I know we do this at Greeley Central now where there are a number of our AP classes for, especially for freshmen. And we have some, some AP classes that you don't want freshmen to take. And then you have some that are sort of introductory AP classes. And so for this one, AP Human Geography, they always, they have a lot of freshmen and a lot of new, new students in, in that class. So they, they invite all the parents in and, and try to, to tell them what, what an AP class is and try to encourage them, how to encourage their, their students. And so I was there with, with my son. And one of the things that I was reminded that sometimes, sometimes I forget is, is that our AP, our AP tests are covered by our MLO. I have forgotten that once upon a time I used to have to pay for those, or those AP tests. And, and I'm so thankful to the voters. Tonight we're going to get to hear from Early College Academy and a lot of our, a lot of our college programs. So you've heard about our Career and Technical Education from other board members, that's paid for by our MLO, but also our college readiness, our AP classes, our IB, our AP exams, our IB exams, our, and a lot of Early College Academy that you're going to hear about tonight, that's, that's all paid for by our MLO. And so just want to take the opportunity again to say thank you to our voters, thank you to, to this community for supporting this school district so well. That's all I have. So I think we are now to our work session report. Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The board reviewed upcoming events and community engagement opportunities. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, Dr. Stacy Dattery, and Early College Academy Principal, Kim Silva, provided an update on the Early College Academy. The work session ended with a debrief from board members.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now to our superintendent's honor roll. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. Good evening. I'd like to first bring up an honoree who was not able to be with us at the last board meeting, but is with us tonight. And I would like to present the superintendent's honor roll to Danielle Bach, who, as we all talked about her at our last board meeting, was recognized as one of the Northern Colorado Women of Distinction in the Education category. So you know, it is, she is truly a woman of distinction. And when we think of educators, we don't often think of the lunch lady, but there's no question that Danielle Bach is an educator and, and is well deserving of this award. So congratulations Danielle, I have a certificate for you. I cannot believe Danielle said no when I asked her if she wanted to say anything. She always wants to talk about all that she does in nutrition services. So it's, it's an honor to honor you Danielle. And then also for our superintendent's honor roll tonight, you're going to hear a report tonight on Early College Academy, but I want to, I want to recognize Ames Community College for their partnership with District 6. And you mentioned concurrent enrollment and AP classes. We couldn't do what we do for our students here in District 6 without this amazing partnership. You'll hear more about Early College Academy, but our Career and Technical Education Center that several of you mentioned tonight, every one of those five programs will have concurrent enrollment and will, are on a certificated pathway. So students will leave with industry certificates. And we, we worked significantly with Ames Community College and their professors and their administrators in order to build out our new Career Technical Education Program on that Jefferson campus. And just so proud of that, that friendship and that relationship. We had hundreds of students complete concurrent enrollment classes this past year. Right now I think we have 754-ish, Jenny's thinking I got it pretty close, right now enrolled in concurrent enrollment. Those are both UNC and Ames, but Ames is our, our biggest draw for our students who are taking concurrent enrollment. And you know, finally, just to say again, that when students leave District 6 with industry certificates because of our partnerships with Ames, students are ready for the workforce. And when you talk about the number of, of children, Dr. Campos Spitsy, who live in poverty in, in the Greeley Evans School District, when we have students leave with an industry certificate and they can go into employment and be gainfully employed, we are turning poverty around in this community. And so for that, we thank Ames Community College. I had a chance to visit with the president today, Dr. Bornstein, who wasn't able to be here tonight, but like any good president, she is sending the, the dean, the chief academic officer and the VP of Academic Affairs, Dr. David A. Lurk. David, would you please join me, please?
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, the board guest. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes and mention that serving the residents of the region is our mission at Ames Community College and concurrent enrollment is a big part of that. We work with over 70 schools, serving close to 4,000 students. And our relationship with the Greeley Evans School District 6 and the Early College Academy is one of our premier relationships. And I'm not going to say more about that because you're going to have a presentation. I don't want to do any spoilers, but thank you very much. This is, this is an important relationship for us and we appreciate this honor and working with you into the future.
Thank you, Dr. A. Lurk.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And we, we also have your, now your report.
Thank you, sir.
Will you give us your report, please?
I would like to first introduce to you who wasn't able to be with us at our last meeting, our new coordinator of Title IX and Compliance. I see in the back there, Mr. Jim Donahue, who I would like for you just to have a chance to see him and, and let him say hello with his hand there. Welcome, Jim. Boy, have we already put him to work in District 6. Yes, he's already hit the ground running. And then I just want to share that it has truly been a great start to school and we welcomed our smallest students at the end of last week, our kinders and our preschool. And we're just so grateful for all of the families, the thousands and thousands of families who have trusted us with, with their children and the opportunity to serve their children here in the community. We, we, our enrollment is up a bit and we're excited about that and we continue, we continue to enroll students. We're not done enrolling. We're, and there's still students we're looking for who we will, we will track down and get them into our seats here in District 6. I wanted to remind you all that we have the Colorado School Boards Association Legislative Tour tomorrow. They are coming tomorrow afternoon with about 30 folks to tour the Career and Technical Education Center and learn a little bit about our five programs there at the Career and Tech Ed Center. So we're honored to have staff from CASB as well as legislators who have chosen to join them to come on this tour tomorrow. I believe we're one of two Career and Technical Education Centers that are going to be observed tomorrow on their tour. Then the last thing I want to share, I had a really joyful late afternoon one day last week when I, Mrs. Overton from HR had invited me to come and say hello to our teachers who are here from the Philippines on J1 teaching visas. And so we, we tested this out last year with a couple of staff members at Billy Martinez and went really well. And so we now, and they went back and recruited their colleagues and friends and other folks, but we now have 12 teachers here teaching in four of our schools, teaching various subjects. Most of these teachers had years of experience in the Philippines and, and they've chosen to come to Colorado to have the Colorado experience and some experience in America. At least one of the teachers had already been here in the United States teaching and made the decision to come to Colorado. He was in Michigan. Imagine why you'd come to Colorado from Michigan, Mr. Henson, right? But, but we have these teachers from the Philippines here at Heath Middle School, Bella Romero, Franklin Middle School and Martinez Elementary School. And I, I've got to tell you, these were some of the most joyful people I have ever spent an hour with. They, they are loving life here in Colorado. They are so grateful and they're so grateful to their colleagues. The staffs at these schools have wrapped their arms around them and have provided them with furniture, appliances, clothing, beds. I mean, they've just taken care of, they've let them stay with them as they're getting settled here in, in the community. And so it's really, it's been wonderful to see how we've welcomed these teachers and, and the kind of support they're getting from their colleagues. And we are, we will bring them to a board meeting and give you the opportunity to meet them and, and thank them for, for taking the risk of coming to Colorado to teach some of our students. But one of you mentioned teacher shortages and recruitment, I think that was you Brenda, about the teacher pathway. And you know, we, we are going all the lengths we can to, to make sure we have quality teachers in our classrooms. And these folks were so upbeat and so spirited about the work they're doing in the classroom. I, you know, I was a little worried about folks coming from the Philippines to Greeley and Evans, Colorado. And I am not worried now that I've had a chance to meet them and, and get to know them a little bit and so thankful that they've chosen to come here. Thank you, President Matthews. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We're now to our public participation. As a board, we welcome comments of community, community members and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community. Oh, I'm missing something. I skipped something. What did I skip? Sorry, guys. I have two different, two different agendas before me. I'm looking at the wrong one. Next we have on our agenda, SLA Goal One, Early College Academy. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand that to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I'll introduce to you Mr. Anthony Osmus, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary and Career Pathways and Ms. Kim Silva, the principal at Early College Academy. She has some students and staff with her who she will introduce as well. Thank you, Mr. Osmus.
Good evening, President Matthews, members of the board and Dr. Pilch. I am Anthony Osmus. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership and Post-Secondary Readiness. Tonight I'm pleased to share with you an update on Early College Academy and our amazing partnership with Ames Community College. Early College Academy was established to provide a unique opportunity for our students to increase post-secondary attainment and address the issue of post-secondary affordability. Joining me tonight are Ms. Kim Silva, Principal of Early College Academy, Mindy Marshall, Assistant Director of Ames and ECA, and TJ Gurney, and Natalie Louisa Valenzuela, both seniors at ECA. To begin, I want to share with you what Early College Academy means for students in our community. First, students have the opportunity to earn a high school diploma and an Associate of Arts degree, all within four years tuition-free. Second, faculty and staff at ECA strive to ensure that the learning environment is personalized for students and the class sizes are smaller with this rigorous college atmosphere. Third, the ECA staff and students have deployed or developed extracurricular clubs that engage students beyond the school day. And finally, students have the opportunity to participate in athletics at their home district high school. This is our ninth year of Early College Academy and it started with just ninth and 10th graders and then they rolled up each year. District 6 and Ames entered into a very unique partnership for both the programming and the facilities to benefit our students. In this partnership, Ames funds the professor salaries, the director and assistant director, academic advisor, tutors and textbooks, while District 6 funds teachers, the principal, technology, service providers, office staff, custodial and nutrition employees. As we stated, this is a wonderful partnership. We thank Ames for this opportunity and we thank our voters for their support through the Mill Levy override. I'm going to turn this next part over to Principal Kim Silva.
Good evening. We have several goals and measures that we use to monitor progress at ECA. The first goal is to have 95% or higher attendance rate. Although we have not quite met that goal, we're really close and we'll continue to put measures in place to support attendance. Our next goal is to have 90%, 90% or higher pass rate in ninth through 12th grade coursework, which includes both high school and college courses. This past school year, we were at 94%. The third goal is for, oh, got to go, here we go. The third goal is for 100% of our students to earn 30 college credits or more and a high school diploma. The national average is 90% and you can see that every year, 100% of our students have graduated with at least 30 college credits. This is a wonderful accomplishment for our students and staff at ECA. And then finally, we have a goal of 65% of our students or higher will or higher will receive an AA degree. Again, the national average is only 33%, and we have far exceeded that annually. We are very proud of the work our students do to achieve this goal. In addition to the goals and measures that I just outlined, we were happy to share that some updated achievement data that we just received this past week. First, ECA again received a performance plan rating by CDE in our 2023 School Performance Framework. We have earned this rating each year we have been in operation. In addition, our April 2023 PSAT and SAT data indicates that our students continue to outperform the state average on state assessments. As you can see on the slide, our students outperformed the state average on each of the PSAT and SAT exams. This is a testament to the hard work of both our instructors and our students. This year, this current school year, we have a total of 322 students, broken down by grade level, as shown on the left side of the slide. While our freshman enrollment dipped last year, we are happy to report that our freshman class this year is larger. Our enrollment has remained relatively consistent with our upper-level cohorts, and we are on track to graduate our largest senior class this year. The table to the right outlines the ethnicity breakdown, which is very similar to the greater District 6 population. Over the past several years, we have focused much of our efforts on retention. Our goal is to retain more and more students each year. ECA is a challenging academic environment, but we know that any student who takes advantage of the supports and resources at ECA can be successful and graduate with us. I'd like to share just a little bit about our student successes through our academic programming. Our master schedule is built on a seven-period day, where classes meet five days a week. Our unique academic program permits students to earn both high school credit and college credit towards an Associate's of Arts degree. Each of our students is establishing a high school transcript and a college transcript at the same time. For example, our freshmen and sophomores take a college-level class for American Government and U.S. History and also receive high school credit for those classes. Within our program, ECA students will earn seven high school credits in each of their freshman and sophomore years while simultaneously earning between nine and 13 college credits. Mindy Marshall, Assistant Director for Ames at Early College Academy, will go through 11th and 12th grade course sequences and cost savings to families.
Most of our juniors and all of our seniors are enrolled in a full college schedule, ranging from 12 to 15 credit hours each semester, which depends on the student's junior year math class. Students are able to tailor their junior and senior year elective courses according to their post-secondary plans, as we mentioned earlier. The classes in bold on the slide indicate courses where students gain both high school and college credit. So you can see that college load, junior and senior year. One of the things I'd like to highlight is the number of high school credits and college credit hours that ECA students can potentially earn. So you see the number of high school credits they earn, the college credit, and the cost savings to our students and their families. We calculate it comparing the $100 per credit hour cost at Ames Community College on the lower end to $482 per credit hour at UNC. As you can see, the number of credits a student takes increases each year, therefore increasing the cost savings. The range shown indicates the amount of money a student would save on tuition if they were to earn those credits at a community college or a four-year university instead. This is an incredible savings for students for the first two years of college coursework, and we are fortunate to have this partnership with our community and for our students. Joining us tonight, as was mentioned, are TJ Gurney and Natalie Louisa, who are seniors at Early College Academy, and they're going to share a few words about their experience at ECA and how this amazing opportunity has positively impacted them.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is TJ Gurney, and I was asked for this portion of the evening to speak on some of my experiences at Early College Academy. I'll take the next few minutes to discuss my nearly four-year career as a student of ECA, as well as discuss what my future looks like as I approach my senior year. I can distinctly remember hearing about Early College Academy for the first time during my eighth-grade year at Prairie Heights Middle School. During the high school recruitment, we were asked to sit in on a small presentation from ECA. My interest peaked immediately as I saw how education-focused and serious the school was about the high school and college hybrid life. Hearing this incredible opportunity, I knew that this was a rare chance for me. The idea that I could potentially work for the next four years and earn a college-level degree right outside of high school absolutely blew my mind. I understood that not many people get this chance, and this may never come up again. So I took the opportunity and applied for ECA. The next four years of my life would be some of the most challenging, yet rewarding, times. My freshman year occurred during the COVID era, and I started high school as a fully online student. I came into ECA extremely nervous, yet hopeful about what was to come. My nerves were instantly calm as I met people and instructors who had changed my life. The amount of support and resources I was given during my first mix of high school and college courses was incredible. Knowing that I could reach a teacher by email and receive a detailed and helpful response was a great relief. I finished the year with all 90% or higher grades in my classes, and thanks to the instructors, who showed a level of passion I had rarely seen. Needless to say, I approached sophomore year with a little more confidence. Coming back to an in-person school is a bit of a shock, as one can imagine. However, once again, I was met with open arms from my peers and my instructors. Now, the amount of college classes on my roster is growing, and I loved every second of it. The classes I took were challenging, but they interested me and taught me information that I knew I could use outside of high school. My advisor at the time encouraged me to take opportunities and new challenges. I started to come out of my shell and took out more leadership roles. Junior year proved itself to be the most difficult by far. My schedule is now full of Ames college classes. The college experience was really beginning to set in as I also gained access to off-blocks and off-campus privileges. I took the time to explore Ames events outside of ECA and was introduced to a vibrant college culture. Once again, I also received a lot of help and advice from both my instructor and my advisor. Within that one year, I went from a student with no extracurriculars on my record to National Honor Society Vice President and a member of multiple clubs. Now, as I enter my senior year of ECA, I feel a sense of bitterness, bit, pardon me, bittersweetness. Two very different feelings. Once this year passes, I know it's time to enter the quote-unquote "real world." I plan to take a gap year to save some money, after which I'll work towards a career in business management. I'm nervous about this transition and feel some kind of sadness knowing that high school is almost over. However, at the same time, I feel an extreme sense of pride and accomplishment. My experience at ECA has taught me so much, and the people I have met have truly changed my life. At this school, I've been encouraged to take chances, learn from my mistakes, and become a leader. I've achieved things I never thought possible, and I leave here knowing one thing for sure, that I absolutely picked the right high school.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Natalie Louisa, a senior as well, from ECA. I came from Krista McAuliffe Sem Academy to ECA for so many reasons, but mainly because of the opportunities ECA gives to their students. As you know, ECA provides the opportunity for students to obtain an Associate of Arts degree along with their high school diploma. This is definitely an advantage for any student if they want to continue their education. I want to go into the medical field, which requires a lot of schooling. Because of the opportunity to take so many college classes while I'm at ECA, I will be able to jump right into taking classes required for my major when I go to college. I want to go to Colorado Mesa University in Grand Junction to study physical therapy. ECA has made me look forward and ease my fear into looking and applying for colleges. This summer, I was able to get a District 6 internship at Sunrise Community Health Clinic with their admin team and shadow amazing people like Dr. Brenda Campos Spitsy, and get that exposure in healthcare. If I had not decided to come to ECA, these opportunities would be slim or just harder to obtain. Connection is what drives ECA and what will keep the family we have started going. Being in such a small school is a blessing. The relationships I have with my professors and teachers have encouraged me to do and be the best self I can be. The friendships I have gained have helped me push through and made the experience at ECA much better. But all in all, I guarantee that ECA has been giving me the most unique opportunity of all, which is helping me become the person I am today. It surely was what gave me this opportunity to be speaking to all of you today. Thank you for your time. And now, Ms. Silva, with some updates.
Thank you. It's hard to top that. We do have just a couple of quick, just quick updates we wanted to share, some new opportunities. So thank you, TJ and Natalie. We've had a great start to the school year, and we just want to share a couple of things that have happened recently. Transportation has been a challenge for many of our families since ECA opened. We are excited to share that. Starting today, District 6 Transportation Services began providing bus transportation for some ECA students. A survey went out to families two weeks ago to identify families who would benefit from bus transportation. And there are some centralized pickup and drop-off locations in Greeley Evans community based on some pre-existing routes for students based on their need. Students will be bused to Twiit Academy with other K-8 students, where they will transfer to a bus, and they'll be dropped off at ECA. Many of these families have already expressed their gratitude, and I really want to echo those thanks to Chad Holly and the District 6 Transportation Team for helping us with this new opportunity for our students. We expect that this transportation opportunity to have a positive impact on future enrollment, for sure, making ECA more accessible to more students. And secondly, this past spring, 21 students were given the opportunity to enroll in courses on the main Ames campus for the first time. This group of students had satisfied all of their high school graduation and AA degree requirements at the end of the previous fall semester. So students worked with their Ames academic advisor to identify courses that supported their intended college and career pathway. The students enrolled in a variety of courses, including Intro to CAD Design, Painting, Intro to Health, and Exercise Science, while still enrolled at ECA. Our students were even further along the path to their specific four-year college degrees because of this opportunity. We're excited to continue and explore how we can utilize concurrent enrollment courses on the main Ames campus. This is a great example of the strong partnership between District 6 and Ames. Thank you. And if you have any questions, our students will be happy to answer.
I think we may have a few questions for you guys. And I think first tonight, we have Dr. Campos Spitsy.
So we got to hear from these guys during our work session just before this meeting. So I got a lot of my questions answered. But I just wanted to highlight again that amazing partnership with Ames and the concurrent enrollment and the cost savings to our families. I was just reading about, I think it's statewide, we have this Career Advanced Colorado Program that Ames is also a part of, and it provides Ames Community College students with free tuition for high-demand jobs like construction, firefighting, nursing, early childhood education. So the first two years, students can go tuition-free. And I was so impressed by that. But then I was thinking about it, and I was like, we do that in District 6. Like, while you're a high school student, you can basically, through ECA and other opportunities, get all of these college credits, also tuition-free. So it just made me think District 6 was amazing, which we are. But yeah, so I'm so glad we have that partnership with Ames and that our students can save so much money that way.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, I always just liked hearing about Early College Academy. It's just, I think we talked in the work session that there's only 400 and something of them in the nation. And there's, just quick Google while I was listening to you guys, 648 high schools in Colorado. So to have only 400 of these types of schools in the nation, but there's 23,72 schools in the nation, it's pretty rare and kind of mind-boggling to understand that. It's such a great opportunity for our students here in the district. I felt you when you said it's bittersweet and a little scary. I went through high school, and I didn't have the tools you have and the jumpstart in life that you guys had there, doing all the great things you're doing. I actually, full disclosure and a little vulnerable here, but I graduated high school, and I was so lost. I went back and I asked if I could re-enroll because I had another year of eligibility wrestling. And my principal laughed at me. He was like, I can't take your diploma away. You graduated. So I get you there, but just have confidence in the work that you've done. You guys are miles ahead of not only our students, right? Not miles, but like a good jumpstart on our students, but a lot of students in the nation. You guys are cream of the crop, and you've done a lot of hard work. So save your money, have that confidence, and go into life and be proud of what you've accomplished, for sure. So thank you, guys, for coming.
Ms. Sullivan.
I actually have a question for Ms. Silva. So I was looking at the schedule for freshmen and sophomores, and I see that that's a full, yes, freshman and sophomore, and that's a full school day. And then you have the juniors and seniors, and you only have the dark block classes listed, which are the Ames College classes. And then you said that the students can pick electives depending on their pursuit of what their future career goals are. So does that mean that they have access to pick additional Ames college classes? Or is that a full college course that they already have assigned to them for the mandatory?
Great question. So our students are enrolled, freshman and sophomore year, they take seven full classes both semester, and those are prescribed classes. Junior and senior year, there are courses that we offer at ECA, and they get choice in the classes that we offer based on, some choice, based on their specific career pathway. They also have to meet the requirements of the AA, so some of those are within a specific category. They do have a few off-blocks, which they love. I think he mentioned it. They do have a few off-blocks, but that is because they're taking between 12 and 15 total credit hours. And so that is a full college course load. I know that was my full college course load in school. So those additional classes that we take we're offering to second semester seniors that have met all requirements. And then they can go take a class on the Ames main campus based on their next path.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Papas.
I just want to say how much I appreciate you all being here tonight. And I loved hearing your stories of your journeys your stories of your journeys as you started as freshmen and now here you are, seniors heading into your senior year and thinking about what comes next. So thank you for sharing your stories with us tonight, and thank you for being here. Also appreciate the Ames staff that came tonight and helped in that overview. Even though I, for eight years, I have been at ECA and have listened to updates, it's just so, the growth and the changes and just the opportunities for kids, I think, is just outstanding, and I just want to thank all of you and appreciate you being here tonight.
I do have a question as well, and you may have said this, so forgive me if I'm asking something you've already stated, but, but what percentage of our, of our ECA students get an associate's degree?
I've got to look to remember the exact number.
Eighty-seven percent, last year Mindy Marshall says, from Ames Community College.
Eighty-seven percent of students get that associate's degree. So eighty-seven percent are graduating with sixty to six, or?
Sixty-plus, sixty to seventy credit hours.
College hours?
Can be, in some circumstances.
Is that, is that pretty norm, normal? Or, I mean, seventy-six is a lot.
It is a lot. It depends upon the math, especially for students who accelerate and advance in math. Calculus is worth five credit hours, so you take two calculus, college calculus classes, and you've got 10 credit hours right there. So I would say sixty-eight to seventy is probably more than norm, but it could potentially be seventy-six on the high end.
Is that the highest that you've seen?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and look. But that's where we're really excited about that opportunity to take some of those hours on the Ames campus so that they can get some of those prereqs for their four-year degree achieved before they go.
Well, that's pretty amazing. Thank you for answering my question. Thank you guys for being here tonight, especially our students. We appreciate your time. We know that as seniors, you're very busy, even in the early school year, so thank you guys for making the time for us. Next on our agenda is our concurrent enrollment. And so, update, and Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. You've heard a lot about concurrent enrollment tonight through the Early College Academy presentation. We're going to take you just a little deeper and, and share some more information with you district-wide. We've got Mr. Anthony Osmus again with us, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Ed. Ms. Jenny Schilling will come to assist Director of Career and Technical Education. Mr. Jordan Carlberg, our Career Pathway Specialist, and Ms. Alma Alivas-Aguilar, Career and College Readiness Coordinator. So with that, Mr. Osmus, it's up to you.
So, good evening once again, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. I am still Anthony Osmus, the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership and Career and College Readiness, or Post-Secondary Readiness. It's an honor tonight to present to you an update on concurrent enrollment. In this district, it is our fervent desire to offer programming to give our students opportunities to be career and college-ready. I'm joined tonight by Jenny Schilling, Director of Career and Technical Education, Jordan Carlberg, Career Pathway Specialist, and Alma Alivas-Aguilar, who is our Career and College Readiness Coordinator. We are guided by our district mission, mission and vision, where District Six engages every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing our students to be college and career-ready. And our vision, District Six engages, empowers, and inspires today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And with our values, we have three that stand out in this work we know every child can achieve. We build positive relationships with students, families, and communities, and we promote access, opportunity, and choice. As you know, within our Innovation 2030 strategic plan, we have four goal areas. The work of personalized learning really falls under the goal of student learning and achievement, where we provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college-ready. Our goal, our outcome by 2026, that ninety percent of students in grades six through 12 will include a college or career pathway and academic course of study in their personalized learning plan, or our PLP. And our main objective, to increase student engagement and career pathways that respond to industry, business, and community needs. I'd like to say that through our strategic planning process of Innovation 2030, three main actions have been identified to continue improving and enhancing the quality programming that is offered. First, increase student engagement and career pathways that respond to industry, business, and community needs. This work is done in conjunction with CTE teachers, counselors, and the work that Nelson and I do with business and community partners. The second is to further develop career pathways, providing a continuum for student post-secondary goals, which includes our work in offering concurrent enrollment and PTech programming. And finally, provide options for all students to earn industry certificates, to meet graduation guidelines, and ensure alignment with workforce demands. To highlight more of these opportunities, I'll turn this over to Ms. Jenny Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Osmus. It is my pleasure to share alongside Mr. Jordan Carlberg and Ms. Alma Alivas-Aguilar the opportunities available to students to participate in concurrent enrollment coursework in District Six. The concurrent enrollment program provides high school students with the opportunity to enroll in post-secondary courses, beginning a college transcript, and earn college credit towards high school graduation. Students may take concurrent enrollment classes at their high school, on the college campus, and online. What is unique to District Six is the financial support provided through the Mill Levy override that allows this opportunity to be at no cost to our students and families. In our high schools, we have five career and technical education programs that have embedded concurrent enrollment within their scope and sequence of coursework. Those pathways are advanced manufacturing, construction, Pro Start, business marketing, and information technology. Twelve of the 23 certified CTE teachers are endorsed at the post-secondary level, making offering concurrent enrollment in these pathways possible. Additionally, we have approximately fourteen core teachers endorsed to teach post-secondary classes and approximately twelve academic classes. Examples of those classes include math for liberal arts, calculus, trigonometry, college composition, Mexican-American studies, and physics. Our high schools do an excellent job in preparing students for college-level classes, and our students truly see the value, as evident by the 759 students participating in concurrent enrollment this fall. This is a significant increase over the last two years, showing that students value the post-secondary opportunities available to them, and demonstrates the emphasis placed on concurrent enrollment in our Innovation 2030 strategic plan. Concurrent enrollment programs help students develop the knowledge, the skills, and abilities necessary to be career and college-ready. And I'm happy to turn this over to Mr. Carlberg, who will share about our concurrent enrollment partnerships and other special programming.
We are thankful to our long outstanding partners with Ames Community College, UNC, and Metro. We've also added two new partners, NJC and Front Range Community College, provide students the opportunity to earn college credit in our cosmetology pathway and at the Greeley West High School construction pathway. As you guys know, we are proud to officially open the D6 CTE Center with highly qualified concurrent enrollment instructors in all of our pathways, allowing for all five of our pathways to offer concurrent enrollment. Students at the CTE Center are earning concurrent enrollment credits towards an associate's degree and/or state licensing requirement. The goal of the CTE Center is to provide students a head start on their post-secondary careers. Additionally, the education pathway at the CTE Center is working with Ames and UNC to create a robust pathway for our students into education. One avenue for students in this pathway is to take advantage of the TREP program, allowing them to complete two years of coursework, coursework, post-high school graduation, and the education pathway at no cost to the families. We hope to increase the number of students going through the TREP program with students enrolled to the education pathway at the CTE Center. Part of the TREP program is that students must take one class on the slide within their senior year. Our students through the education pathway at the CTE Center will complete both, or four classes, EDU 2211, EDU 2341, EDU 2611, EDU 2088, all prior to high school completion. Now I'll turn it over to Alma to share about two additional opportunities within District Six.
Thank you. All right, so the PTech or Pathway to Technology Early College High School is a unique educational model, allowing high school students to earn their high school diploma and associate's of applied science while, while also gaining relevant work experience in a growing field. Courses are taken for both high school and college credit and, at no cost to families. PTech programs are offered in the construction pathway at Greeley West and in the advanced manufacturing pathway at Greeley Central High School. Students in the Greeley West High School senior cohort will have completed thirty-seven college credits at the end of their school year, and students completing their junior year will have completed nineteen college credits towards their associate's in project management. Additionally, Ames Community College has partnered with the University of Wyoming, allowing students a one-to-one credit transfer directly into their construction management program. The Greeley Central PTech Program has two students in their 14-year whom are also working in their manufacturing industry, and twelve students in their second-year course of the PTech Manufacturing Program. All PTech programming is at no cost to our families, and provides the opportunity for students to attend Ames Community College for two years following high school completion. PATH FORWARD is a pilot program District Six is participating in with the Department of Higher Education to support students graduating high school early with scholarship dollars to attend any Colorado two- or four-year post-secondary institutions, trade schools, apprenticeships, or certificate training programs approved by CDHE. The district is responsible for identifying students and sharing the pathway, I'm sorry, PATH FORWARD, opportunity with them and resources needed for a smooth transition into their post-secondary plan. Eighty-one students have been identified last school year, and students have eighteen months to advance of this scholarship dollars once identified. Today, twenty-one students will be, benefit from this scholarship. Thank you, and we will be happy to take any questions.
Ms. Pappas?
So Alma, I'm interested in the PATH FORWARD. So, am I understanding it correctly? So if I'm, I graduate, and then in my semester of, the next year of college, then I get $3,500, is that correct?
Approximately, yes, that is correct. So a student identifies themselves as an early grad, either half a year or a semester, or a full year.
Okay, and did we just, is this just new? I mean, it's just?
It is. This is the 30-year, we're offering it, so we're just starting the program. It is a five-year program.
Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, not so much a question, but just, just a comment. I was going to say this the last time, but I'm glad I waited. You know, you guys went over the, the mission of career and college-ready, and we've been able to talk about the CTE Center a lot lately because of its opening, and then we went clear up to ECA, and the, I've said this a couple times, but we're trying to cast the broadest net that we can cast to catch as many of our fish and, and to help them be successful. And it just highlights, really, like, I'm really thankful that I got this opportunity to be on the school board and, and you guys trusted me to, to be up here and elected me back a couple of years ago, but it just really highlights the job that Dr. Pilch and her staff and, and the system they've created, because you go from Jefferson and Gap and all the way up to Earl's College Academy, and there's, there's about as far left and right as a man with as you can get to, to get everybody to that finish line and get them career and, and college-ready. And it, it just feeds into, you know, the mayor's job, doing his job, and, and having that asset as a, the school district, you know, as an asset and building strong community members. And it just really highlights, like, how lucky Greeley is as a, as a community to have D6 doing the things they're doing, and, and to come from where we were back when I moved to Greeley in 2014, with exclusively almost everybody telling me, "Don't enroll your kids in D6, go to Windsor, go to Eaton," you know, something like that. And to today, we're, we're standing here and that leaps and bounds, and, and it's a direct reflection on the leadership and, and the community's trust in, in, in what's going on. So it's just really awesome. I just wanted to make sure I said my two cents again, so thank you guys for everything you're doing and, and keep up the good work. You know, there's always more to do, but I don't want to forget how far we've come either, so.
Ms. Schilling, I have a question. I'm not sure if you can, you'll be able to answer it or not, but I'm just curious, do we ever have, or how often do we have students switch programs? So, do you ever have kids that are in, in one career program and then move to another?
We do have students that will start in one and then decide that it's not for them. I always use the healthcare example where they go in and figure out there's a lot of blood and that's not for them. So then they, there's other career paths within healthcare that they may find just as rewarding. But yeah, we have students change frequently from one path to another path.
Yeah, I would, it just occurred to me that that's probably one of the, one of the great advantages of having so many career pathways, that there are students, again, they, they think they want to be a nurse and they, and they see blood and, for the first time, and, and think, "Okay, I need to find something else." And we, and they get to do that before they ever go to college and before they ever make those, those kind of financial investments that you have to make to, to take one program and, and end up spending five years in college sometimes. I know I changed my major about three or four times, as a number of us probably did, and it's great to, great to have so many. And again, thank you, you guys, for, for everything that you do. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, well, seeing none, I will, I'll let you guys go back to your seats. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate this update. Dr. Pilch, now we are to our public participation. I'll read my script again. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically do not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs or disrupts order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of public comments. With that read, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Samantha Pacheco. Welcome, Ms. Pacheco. Is Ms. Pacheco here? Okay. Next up tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Ms. Foster here? Thank you for being here, Ms. Foster. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. Both of my parents were public school teachers, and as, one of the things that they said that impressed itself on me was, when you're a public school district, you have to take whatever student shows up at your door. You cannot, as opposed to a private school, select those that fit your mission or fit your vision. Whatever students show up, those are your kids and you're responsible for teaching them. And although academics was certainly stressed in my household, and I was expected to do well in academic subjects, they saw the value of offering lots of different kinds of opportunities for all kinds of kids that might show up at school. They spent part of their career working at a library arts and crafts center in a disadvantaged section of the district. And back in the day, when year-round schools were a thing, they ran the U-round gardening program, so all the elementary school kids got to participate in year-round gardening. And so I'm just impressed when I look at District Six, between coming to the meetings and hearing different speakers, hearing different students talk, how many different opportunities are being provided to engage students? Whether it's sports, whether it's the drama club, whether it's the rifle club at Northridge, whether it's speech and debate, just all these activities, there's just a tremendous number of activities to keep those students engaged in the classroom, in school, which gives them that opportunity to be career and college-ready, to go out and be a citizen of the United States. And I just, like I said, between the opportunities and just all the activities, I've just become very impressed with what's being offered in the district, and I hope that that will continue, from everything from a rigorous academic standard to kids that are just never going to be happy in a rigorous academic standard, and they want to be out there on a job site working as a welder or a construction manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Thank you for being here, Ms. Foster. Welcome, and you'll have two minutes.
All right, thank you for this opportunity. At Chartis, we got our big banner that says, "Thanks to all the voters for the Mill Levy override," and I just want to say what a, now that we're unpacked, now that we've passed the fire code, what a wonderful place it is to work. It's a little bit like being inside an M.C. Escher drawing, where I sometimes get lost on all the stairways, and I just find an exit and go around and start over at the beginning. But I've spent the last three weeks unpacking the library and the literacy lab, and unpacking and unpacking, and I'll be doing that still for a while. But as I do that, it's just wonderful to look at the books and say, "Oh, I read this book, what a fabulous book it was. Oh, I want to read this book, maybe I'll set it aside and get to it in too, in not too long." But it makes me think of what a librarian told me once about books. And she said, "Books are like windows and mirrors. When you look in a mirror, you see yourself." And we want all of our kids to see themselves in the mirror, because if you look in the mirror and you don't see anything, it says you're not of value, you don't belong, you're not worth our time. And we want books to be a window so that we're not just looking out the window and seeing nothing. It's like seeing others, trying to understand their experiences, developing empathy. So I would just like to speak in favor of the board's current policy on challenging books, which is that any parent may decide that a book is not appropriate for their child, and they may exclude their child from that book or exclude the book from their child, but it leaves lots of other opportunities for windows and mirrors for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Angelica Weiss. Welcome, Ms. Weiss, thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
People keep showing up at the board meetings and speaking on how people want to ban books. I'm not sure where they're getting this idea from. I'm assuming it's from some of the members of the board, because I know that the people who have spoken here are asking for parental consent on material that is sexually graphic. They're not asking, they're asking for parental consent, not bans. Michael Matthews, you have a disregard for the truth when you say that you can't pull these books from the libraries because it will go against a student's First Amendment. The First Amendment guarantees an author to be able to publish a book, not to have it in a school library. It is completely within your legal right to pull a book from a school library that is not age-appropriate, and for, for children with material that Dr. Pilch herself called pornographic in nature. And yet, we weren't even asking for you to pull the book. We were, from the libraries, we were asking for parental consent before children are exposed to this type of material with sexual graphic content. Parents need to be aware of what their children are exposed to. Telling the community that you cannot do that is either a lie or you are receiving incorrect legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Next tonight, we have Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Thank you for being here, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. According to the-
According to the Domestic Violence Services website, nearly 1.5 million high school students nationwide experience physical abuse from a dating partner in a single year. One in three girls in the U.S. is a victim of physical, emotional, verbal abuse from a dating partner. A figure that far exceeds rates of other types of youth violence. One in 10 high school students has been purposely hit, slapped, or physically hurt by a boyfriend or a girlfriend. Only 33% of teens who were in an abusive relationship ever told anyone about the abuse. 81% of parents believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they don't know it's an issue. I really look forward to looking at the new anti-bullying curriculum, and I really hope domestic violence is covered in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Mr. David Meek. Welcome, Mr. Meek, thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you all so much.
You'll have two minutes.
I'm trying to be not noticed. I have a dream. I have a dream that District 6 will come up and be a premier district in America. Such that we have a great city and a great county, why can't we have a district, great district, that people will be coming to us, just like you've mentioned about the Philippine teachers and stuff coming. We could do that, but we've got one problem, we have no soul. One of the pastors asked Hitler about what he was going to do with the soul of the country, and Hitler said, "You just leave that up to me." And now we know what happened. And the same thing is happening to us right before our very eyes. So I have a dream that you will get born again and do some changes that needs to be done, as you already know. I have a dream that the kindergartens and the first graders will be able to read by the time they get through the first grade. It's called the ABECA program. My son went through that, and he was reading at second-grade level when he finished kindergarten. It's called the ABECA program. It also teaches them to spell correctly as well. And I'm sure you know about it, you just don't want to mess with it. You'd just rather have kids that can't read, that's crazy. And then we graduate them, and they become educated fools and educated idiots, and they sit on school boards and Capitol boards and city councils, because we have no spirit, no soul. But I still have a dream that God will get a hold of some of you. Now, we all made fun of the Millstones a couple weeks ago, but I would be very careful, I sure wouldn't go out there without a life jacket on, because that's not a laughing matter, and you ought to know that, sir. You ought to know the Bible, and that's what we need. I have a dream we could open it every morning with a pledge of allegiance and one scripture and a prayer every morning, and we get the Bible back in schools. That's what a dream I have, okay? Thank you so much, I've got more, but time's gone. I have a dream we get three minutes, too, and we get a change in November the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Miller. You have two minutes.
It's become very clear you care not about children, just the funding they bring and the hundreds of millions. So now we can focus on what remains hidden and sift through the hokum for the knowledge forbidden. There's a plan in the works for human demise. If you listen real close, you can make out the cries of the people who see it, who are exposing the lies. The serpent has slithered right into our schools and tempted our leaders to break sacred rules. They ate from the fruit, now they're rotten inside. Their souls are so sickened, a piece of them died. Goodness and wholeness and values forsaken, because now they're beholden to orders from Satan. The devil fits in here at D66, he's digging our logo and getting his kicks. He's not just in our schools, his agenda's far-reaching. He's also in churches, and some pastors preaching. They push the agenda on websites and TV, and even the college, right here in Greeley. The workplace now gets diversity training, equity lessons, and inclusion ordaining. It's as easy as that to silent dissent, silence dissent, and they rely on your silence, because that's your consent. So remember this next time you just go along in silence with nonsense and things that are wrong, because for what's coming next, you need to be strong. The transhuman race will need digital IDs, so more lockdowns and masking to prep our psyche. Camp FEMA's awaiting, they'll say you must go, don't dare believe them, they're shady mofo's. All our new schools are now single-point entry, so are jails and prisons, and not accidentally. FEMA camps can set up in our schools overnight to help sow the spread of the virus we fight. ConJOP 19 was just their debut. Don't let the next virus land you in the zoo. They've hijacked our language and neutered our men. They propagate evil we fail to condemn. Please don't cover that smile, not ever again. Let's stand in our power as women and men. For the sake of our species, be bold in dissent, because compliance is silence, and that's your consent.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next tonight is our consent agenda. We'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Strights approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on our consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda, and finally on our agenda, we have the first reading of a repeal of Policy BDFC preschool council. And this is a first read, so it requires no action from us tonight. But Dr. Pilch, would you mind giving us and the public just a brief explanation of what we're doing and why?
Yes, thank you, President Matthews. We are seeking for you to repeal Policy BDFC preschool council. This policy was previously established as part of state law that required school districts to have preschool council, and then the outline of what that council should include was also in this policy. This is no longer a part of state law, as the preschool regs have all changed with the universal preschool. So we're recommending we repeal the policy since law no longer requires it. I suspect that we will, however, continue to have a preschool advisory council here in District 6, but it won't be under the mandate of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions or comments for Dr. Pilch on this first read of the repeal of this policy? All right, I don't see any, so we'll conclude that piece of business. And because that's our last piece of business, this meeting is adjourned.